All right, let's call this meeting to order of the Isani City Council if we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. During roll call, we have four out of five members present. Councilman Lundin did call in and we are expecting his absence. So, and I just wanted to remind everybody, I think this was instructed by you guys that we want to speak clearly and directly into the microphone. It was my job to remember to say that, so, and then we've got a huge agenda tonight, so we'll try to be as efficient and to the point as possible here. So, do we have anyone for public comment? All right, hearing no public comment, do we have any agenda modifications?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. We do have one modification and then one announcement that I'll make at this time. One of them is to move item L three, resolution to consider setting work sessions for 2024 budget from consent to a business item. So that would move it to K twenty. And also I'd like to mention for members of the public in the viewing audience is that we are taking a recess from council at seven thirty PM this evening to start our EDA Economic Development Authority meeting, and then we will resume city council following that. Thank you.
All righty. And were we removing one item from the business items to the consent as well, or does that?
The packet was already published with that change.
Okay, all right, gotcha. So we're good there. All right. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion adopted.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Merrill and a second from Councilman Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Moving on to proclamations, commendations, and certificate awards of awards, we had the 2022 Wastewater Treatment Award. And that was, I'll just kind of read through this here. That's our Public Works Department. Earned recognition from Minnesota Pollution Control Agency for operational excellence at the wastewater treatment plant. The Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, MPCA, is recognizing the city of Isani for outstanding operations. To receive this recognition, facilities must demonstrate consistent compliance with monitoring, operations, and maintenance requirements, submit accurate, on-time reports to the MPCA, and employ staff certified by the MPCA in wastewater operations. The people who safeguard this outstanding treatment facility are committed to protecting and preserving water quality in a state that deeply values its natural resources, said Nicole Blazing, Municipal Division Director at MPCA. The MPCA recognizes their considerable efforts and deeply appreciates their service to their community. Recognizing facilities this year has even more significance as the MPCA celebrates the 50th anniversary of the Clean Water Act. Clean Water Act established the basic framework for regulating pollution in waters by creating quality standards to protect drinking water and to maintain a healthy aquatic community for animals and recreational uses. Thanks to those standards, treatment facilities were developed to clean water before it is returned to our river or stream. Minnesota has approximately sixteen hundred municipal and industrial wastewater treatment facilities, with two hundred and forty-eight qualifying for the outstanding operations recognition. So, so they're in good company there, and I know that the guys at Public Works take a lot of pride on how they perform at the wastewater treatment plant there. So, so that's great to see, and you can check out the newspaper to see that info and the picture of the guys there. So, so we want to thank them for that, and we certainly appreciate their effort there. It's also National Police Week, and I'll go ahead and read this proclamation here. National Police Week, whereas in nineteen sixty-two President Kennedy proclaimed May fifteenth as National Peace Officers' Day, and the calendar week in which May fifteenth falls is National Police Week. Established by a joint resolution of Congress in nineteen sixty-two, National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others, and whereas public safety officers of the Isanti Police Department stand watch over our citizens, selflessly risking their lives to protect individual families, neighborhoods, and properties against crime, and whereas Monday, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, is observed nationally as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty, and whereas the Isani Police Department, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered dedicated service to the community, and now therefore I, James Gordon, Mayor of the city of Isani, do hereby proclaim May fourteenth to May twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, as National Police Week within the city of Isanti. And we definitely want to thank our police department for everything that they do, and I probably told this story before. I know Travis has heard it before, but I was on a ride along when I first got on the council, and they had a call come in for an active shooter potential situation where they had somebody outside of Coburn's that they thought might have a weapon, and just the amount of quick response, and it was amazing to be on a ride along and actually get to see that. I mean, these guys are ready to go for the worst possible situation you could encounter, and it was just awesome to see how quickly they were ready, and I mean, how gutsy they were to get out there and get after it. And it ended up being a situation where there was no weapon, and the way that they handled it, to be able to do that and to restrain themselves from using force in a situation where you, there's a lot of pressure and you don't know what's going on. I mean, that, it's amazing what they do every day. It really is. And so I just wanted to share that. We really appreciate what you guys are doing there. All right, so do we have a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes from the Committee of the Whole on April eighteenth, and the council meeting minutes from April eighteenth as well?
Motion to approve, second.
I have a motion from Councilman Heeman and a second from Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Announcements, we have a Committee of the Whole meeting coming up on Tuesday, May sixteenth at five PM. We have a planning commission meeting on the same night at six PM, and following that, we have the council meeting at seven PM. Do we have any council committee reports? All right. So we'll move on then to business item, K one, resolution accepting the 2022 Annual Financial Report and Management Letter from ABDO, presented by Justin Nielsen, and he's going to give us some information here. I could hear you before, but now I can really hear you.
All right. Well, thanks for having me at your meeting. I'll be as brief as I can here. I'll go through our 2022 financial statement presentation. I'd just like to first say thank you to the council for having us as your audit firm. We appreciate that. I'd also like to say thank you to staff, mainly to Mike, for his help as part of the audit process. We couldn't do it without him. So, thank you. So just a brief introduction, I will go over the audit results that we are hired to give for our opinion. I'll also go over the general fund results, as well as the other governmental funds, enterprise funds, and I'll close with some key performance indicators. So in 2022, we did issue a clean, unmodified opinion, which is the opinion that the city is looking for. So, to arrive at that opinion, we did test a number of transactions around paying of bills, paying of employees, looking at the taxes, looking at grants, what the council makes, gets to make decisions, and et cetera. So, with that, we have one finding that we'll report on the next slide. But first, I'd like to just also point out that we are required to test Minnesota state statutes and legal compliance as part of our audit. So, the Office of the State Auditor does put guides on their website that we are required to test as part of our audit. So a couple examples of those things would be timely payment of claims, and looking at things for legal compliance related to bidding and quotations. So we don't have any findings related to Minnesota legal compliance or state statutes in 2022. So our audit results, again, the 2022 finding that we did have, which is consistent to the prior years, is titled Preparation of Financial Statements. So as part of the financial statement audit, ABDO, the accounting firm, did prepare the financial statement documents. So as part of that, we are required to report somewhat of an internal control deficiency, noting that we are serving as part of the internal controls of the city. So, also to note that although there is compensating controls for review and other things by the Finance Department, there is mainly one person as the Finance Director in charge of most of those duties. So again, a common finding for a city the size of Isanti and one that is not uncommon to the city. So we'll go into the general fund results quick here. In the next slide, we look at the, kind of a five to six-year comparison. We compare the unassigned fund balance to the fund balance policy of the city, and compare it to the future year's budget. So again, that's why it's offset there, the 2018 balance to the 2019 budget, et cetera. So, we can see a really consistent fund balance of the general fund over the past five years. I think that's really positive. Again, looking at that policy, excuse me, looking at that percentage, we know it's gone from about thirty-three up to forty-two percent. I think one thing to point out that the city's policy is fifty percent, so two things to consider would be, A, one would be looking at the minimum fund balance or looking at that policy, or again, two would be to consider looking at getting that fund balance up to that policy. So, I think just something to be aware of, and again, just based on that policy. But overall, a really consistent trend line there with the general fund balance as compared to the budget. So if we focus just on 2022, we do see on this slide just a revenue budget to actual, excuse me, general fund budget to actual statement. So the general fund did budget a decrease of about forty-five thousand in 2022. Actual results did come in a little bit more favorable. The general fund did increase about two hundred and forty-five thousand, which is positive. Some of the main reasons for that, you know, looking at expenditures, I think most of the expenditures were under budget, which I think is positive. One of the bigger ones was in the public safety, so I think that's good. Again, I think the other thing, just to note that, you know, the transfers in did have about a fifty thousand dollar positive budget variance again. Overall, I think things looked really good and caused that increase in the fund balance, as we see in this chart and on the one previous. The next slide we do is just put together a three-year comparison in a bar chart format to show, you know, where the general fund revenues and expenditures are broken out. So I think in this chart, you can see a lot of consistency year over year. I think a little bit of an increase in that tax line. I think there are a number of reasons for that, some miscellaneous tax receipts, as well as just overall increases. And again, I think overall the expenditure is really on a consistent level as you look across the last three years. The next type of fund I'll go over is the special revenue funds. So there are a number of different special revenue funds that the city does have. So again, they are listed out. I think there is a, the only thing I would point out too is just noting that anything that is in the negative would be kind of borrowing from other funds, and just to make sure, and I think there is, to make sure there is a plan in place to eliminate those deficits in future years. Two of the bigger ones would be the Isanti Indoor Arena and the Luminate Isanti. Again, that one just getting off the ground or started last year. So, I think the only other thing to point out is most of these resources are either restricted or committed for future use of the funds, you know, specific purpose. Next is the capital, excuse me, Capital Project Fund fund balances. So again, this has been slimmed down over the years that I've been doing the audits. So again, there's only four of those funds, which I think is positive. And again, I think this one, over the, from this year to, from last year to this year, I think there's been a really positive trend in the right direction. Again, the Street Construction Fund, I guess, did decrease a little bit, but overall, I think is operating as intended, doing some borrowing from the MSA program and advancing on some of those things to pay for some current projects now. And the Capital Replacement Fund has increased from the deficit last year up to about five hundred thousand in 2022. So I think that's really good to have some cash on hand to pay for some of those equipment purchases in the future. And again, noting that those resources and these funds mainly are assigned for the specific purpose, or can be used for really anything. The last governmental fund type is the debt service funds. On this slide, we do just show the two debt service funds that are listed, that the city has in their governmental funds, and just put together some information there on the future debt service payments, principal, and interest. And again, I think it's important to point out, there only is the two in the governmental funds, which I think is positive. And one of the bonds is set to expire in 2024, and the other is in 2030. All right, so we'll get into the enterprise funds next. So I'll start with the water fund. And just a brief intro, the two graphs, the two bar charts we'll see. The top is an operating receipts comparison to operating costs and debt payments. What we would look for is that red line or that orange line exceeding the black and the yellow. And on the bottom, we do show just the overall cash balance, as well as a minimum target balance, which is defined as the following year's debt service and six months of operating costs. So we feel that that's a good minimum balance for an operating, or excuse me, an enterprise fund. So as we look at the water fund, I think overall the past four years do show positive fund results, noting that that operating receipts line is exceeding those debt and those operating costs. So I think that is reflected a little bit in just the overall cash balance. I think there was some capital-related purchases that aren't reflected in our graphs, but I think overall a really good performance for the water fund and some reserves on hand to pay for any future infrastructure needs. The next is the sewer fund. Again, we see those same two charts. I think similar results to the water fund. I think overall rates are consistent, and overall those receipts are sufficient to cover those costs and debt payments. And again, I think we see that over the minimum target cash balance, or minimum target balance, as well as just a consistent increase in cash, and again, with infrastructure costs going up and expected in future years for all cities, I think that's a positive sign. So last, before we get to the liquor store, is the stormwater fund. Again, I think this one, a little less activity, but again, something to continue to monitor. I think overall the operating receipts do exceed those costs, and again, increasing that cash balance over time to pay for future projects. So again, good fund there too. So the last one, again, is the liquor store. This one is a little different, so we put together some data, and we compared overall the city's gross profit, as well as expenditures, operating income, and other things like transfers out and cash balances. So, a lot of words on this chart. I think the thing that I would like to focus on is just the overall percentage in the gross profit. I think overall, the gross profit compared to the OSA averages is really strong. You know, looking at 2020 and 2022, I think obviously some construction and some outliers in 2021 with the liquor stores. So I think looking at those two years specifically, and looking at 2022, I think gross profit percentage exceeds by two percent compared to those OSA averages. So I think really positive. And again, looking at that operating income percentage, almost five percent over. So I think really good results for the liquor store when we compare to the others in the averages and just in general. We do have some similar charts for the liquor store, just to close, and just noting that that's more informational in nature, and just noting the cash balance again over that minimum target, and kind of hovering around that one point two, one point one million range. Our last slide, to kind of tie everything together before we get into our key performance indicators, is looking at the cash investments chart. So to tie everything together, I think a lot of activity goes into everything that goes on in a city, but I think it's interesting always to look at this chart, how consistent it is year over year, and looking at that overall cash balance out of all the activity that does happen. So again, about thirteen million back in 2020, up to about fourteen million in 2022, and you can see how everything is kind of broken down. And I think that's consistent to a lot of the graphs we see, with those enterprise funds having a majority. All right, so the last thing, again, those key performance indicators. The first slide does look at the taxes. And again, I'll just briefly define two. Class four cities would be anything under ten thousand in population. Obviously, cities in Isanti County make up the rest. There's no population distinction. It would be all for that cities in Isanti County. So, looking at the, you know, the tax rate, I think overall really good results in comparison with the county, and just, you know, really consistent, I suppose, with those metro and just everybody that's included in that class four city. So I think a really positive for the, positive ratio for the city. Similarly, looking at the taxes per capita, again, I think is another one that, you know, the city does compare very favorably. So overall, really good there. The next one does look at the debt. So we do have two charts there. One is debt service per resident or per capita, as well as debt service expenditures as a percentage of total. So again, I think this one is a little up and down just with the overall debt expenditures, but I think overall this one compares favorable too. And again, these charts really are just informational in nature, and cities don't really compare one to one to any other city next to them or anywhere. So just some information for the council to use. The last one we do look at is current expenditures per capita, as well as capital expenditures per capita. You know, capital expenditures per capita is dependent, obviously, on what's happening within the city, but the current expenditures per capita is kind of like more of an operational, what the city is using for operations. And this would be for all funds, but again, Isanti does compare really favorably to everybody in those peer groups. So I think really positive there. So I talked pretty fast, but I have reached the end of my presentation. Does anybody have any questions or anything they'd like me to go back to, to touch on?
On that last slide, Wasai County and the other class four cities, have they just not reported that information yet?
So, yeah, so we don't have access to the 2022 information. We barely get access to the 2021 information. We got it sent to us like in March, so yeah.
Okay.
Those will be available next year. Good question.
Any other questions for Justin? That was thorough, quick, and efficient there, Justin. We appreciate that. So, thank you for all the work that you guys do on this, and for the financial department. I know it's a lot of work to get ready and prepared for this, and you guys put a lot of effort into it, so, nice job.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
Absolutely.
Good luck the rest of the year.
I don't need a motion to, do I need a motion to accept that at all? Okay, do I have a motion to accept the 2022 Annual Financial Report?
I'll make the motion to accept.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Councilman Merrill and a second from Councilman Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. K two, ordinance repealing ordinance number seven seven two, and interim ordinance authorizing studies and imposing a moratorium on the sale of cannabis products.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, good evening, Mayor, Council. So as we had legislative action in July of 2022, there was, they allowed for the certain cannabis products to be sold in Minnesota. The city council took action on, which was enforced on September fifteenth of 2022, to put an interim ordinance in place, which had a moratorium on the sale of certain cannabis products, while city staff was able to research this topic more and have further conversations with council, allowing for the potential for local control, some zoning regulations and such. So staff is recommending, per discussion that we held at the April fourth city council meeting, that this moratorium interim ordinance number seven seven two be repealed, as our next item on the council agenda this evening is to possibly adopt an ordinance for the cannabinoid products.
Make a motion to repeal ordinance seven seven two.
I'll second.
I have a motion to repeal ordinance seven seven two from Councilman Merrill and a second from Councilman Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Moving on to K three, an ordinance to consider the adoption of chapter two ninety-eight cannabinoid products.
Thank you, Mayor. So as we have reviewed this topic, multiple meetings, Committee of the Whole and also city council, there was a draft presented at the April fourth city council meeting. The draft before you this evening would be chapter two ninety-eight, a new chapter called cannabinoid products would be an ordinance put into place. This is as written at that April fourth meeting. However, there was included language based upon the desire of council to include other products, and I'll read the definition that I included into this. Cannabinoid product, any product containing cannabinoids, including an edible cannabinoid product that is sold for human consumption, whether chewed, smoked, inhaled, snorted, sniffed, vaporized, or ingested by other means. All other items within this ordinance is the same as was presented on April fourth. It does have that three hundred feet rule from door to door from a school facility that it cannot be sold. As was discussed at the April fourth meeting, the permit fee, or the, excuse me, the license fee for this would be a hundred and fifty dollars for an annual fee. The actions that staff would take should this be adopted this evening is for the city clerk to send a letter to any establishments that are tobacco shops or shops that we know have a desire to sell this or currently are selling it, as were in place prior to that moratorium. They would get a letter and the application, so they knew the formal process, and they'd have sixty days to turn that in with their hundred and fifty dollar fee. This ordinance has been posted for the required ten days.
Any discussion on this, or I'll ask for a motion to approve?
I think it was good that we started planning this ahead of time. So, good job, staff. I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve the adoption of chapter two ninety-eight from Councilman Merrill and a second from Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. K four, an ordinance to consider amending zoning ordinance number four four five, section two, definitions, and section thirteen use regulations.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you is the zoning amendment ordinance change for number four forty-five, for section thirteen use regulations specifically for accessory structures. This has been discussed at the February twenty-first, March twenty-first, and April twenty-eighth, or April eighteenth meeting, sorry. We discussed a variety of different cities, what they're doing, what we'd like to do, and really Ryan actually formulated a handout that resembles what you guys have requested. Also includes accessory dwelling units as being allowed now within the city limits. The chart will be updated to really simplify what's allowed within the city for making it easier and to allow up to forty percent impervious space. We do not have a ordinance within our city that requires sheds to be smaller than the primary structure. So it'll be up to forty percent impervious regardless of the size allowed. For up to two sheds, depending on two acres and smaller, and then three sheds when you're over two acres.
For, I have a question for you. On that one, I thought we had talked about not having a number of units, like a...
See, I thought we had two, yeah, right, yeah.
Because we didn't want to tell people that they couldn't have more than two. Say if you have a chicken coop and a shed and a garage, you'd technically be over the limit. I thought we talked about not having that.
Yeah, yeah.
There was some discussion on that. There was never a decision formally made. I know Counselor Lundin made the point that he did not want more than that many sheds for a number of reasons, so.
But I was thinking the same thing, because the chicken coop is a structure, and so is the shed that you buy from the landscaping place, and so is this...
Or a pool shed, or...
Yeah, right, right. So if you had all those things, and you also wanted to have an accessory dwelling, which will be allowed under this, then that would be number, well, even just those three would be three, right? So, yeah, I mean, I guess that was kind of my thought too, is that I'd rather take the limit off of how many, I guess, you can have. I mean...
Or put a more realistic limit, like five or six or something, because all that stuff adds up.
If you're going to count all those little things, then yeah, I mean, it's...
And we also have to just keep in mind for zoning purposes, people then have to maintain those sheds, so that's where the decrease in property values can come from, because as time goes on, people don't tend to maintain through the years. So then that's where the blight and issues come from. So just want that to be considered.
Let's see, if somebody wanted to come in and they wanted to do a third building or a third structure, can they ask for a variance for that? Or I mean, what, we can allow that, so?
If they can show undue hardship that they need more space.
I thought we'd also discussed about not needing the hardship necessarily. Didn't we discuss that in another meeting too?
No.
That's like state statute that you can't, yeah, yeah. But do you want to maybe, you want to go to three and four, and then?
Well, does this cover all districts, the whole city?
This is all residential districts, all single-family residential districts.
Mayor and Council, another option may be to exclude the certain sizes of a square foot. So, some of the language that was stricken from, as part of this revision of this ordinance, was that a shed, one shed, now this could be discussed further, one shed not to exceed one hundred and seventy square feet may be permitted in addition. So that's another thing to take into consideration.
Which would be likely to include most chicken coops, because I think our maximum allowance for that is two hundred square feet, so.
Yeah, sure.
It's relatively close.
So I mean, do we want to say it doesn't count as a structure if it's under a hundred and seventy square feet?
And we could just leave that in the ordinance.
Yeah, I'm already at five.
I'm already at five as well, so, I mean, there's... I'm, I'm already at five as well. So, I mean, there's lots of people in the city that don't follow that ordinance. So why, why have it? I mean, I, I think the hundred and seventy square foot would be an easy way.
Sure. So then if it's something smaller, like a garden shed or a, a chicken coop, then it doesn't count as a structure against your, your two or your three?
People have been grandfathered in within the city, and so that's how they can have
Sure.
sheds. So if your house was built before any zoning standards were put in place, we're not gonna make you tear shed down. So that's the
Yeah, I guess I'd, I'd be, I think I'd be, if that sounds okay with you, Dan, what do you think? I mean, okay.
So you'd like it to be three and four, just to clarify?
Well, we could do that too. I mean,
Or what did you want to hear? Sorry, just be clarified.
So anything under a hundred and seventy square feet maybe doesn't count as a structure?
Okay, so we want to unstrike that, which is
It'd be no limit though. You're not gonna limit it to just one.
On, yeah, on strike it and take away the limiting.
Okay, anyone, okay. So then we'll repost and then bring back to council.
Okay.
And then just for clarification, that table, we're still staying with the two and three then, if we do that other change?
Do we want to stay with the two and three then, or you think so?
Yeah, I think so.
Well, does that, that includes the, the secondary dwelling unit too. So, I mean, maybe it's not enough if we're gonna add that. Because, I mean, if you have a house, a secondary dwelling unit and then one garage, you're already done.
Yeah, I mean, if you had, if you had an older house with a detached garage, then you're
That does not count. Everybody's allowed one garage.
Okay. Okay. So even if it's a detached garage, it's not gonna count as a second?
Yes, for my
Okay. Well, well, then I think that's probably
Understanding of the zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
Because you're required to have a garage. So it's not an accessory.
So that doesn't count as
Clarify this then. So buildings, for example, ten by seventeen, that's hundred and seventy square feet are, are not included in that.
Wouldn't count, right.
And they don't require a permit?
They require a zoning permit, but not a
Not a building permit.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I think that, that sounds good.
Three, I mean, can we do three?
Three over.
Yeah, I mean, I
So could, could you clarify?
I'm okay, I'm okay with no limit. So, I mean, that's, so, so you guys tell me, Ed.
Dan, what are you thinking on this one?
Uh, the two.
Two?
Yep. You only got so much yard, green space to work with. So on someone's backyard, nothing but twelve, twelve sheds.
It depends on the lot size too. I mean, if they're under the forty percent, yeah.
I mean, that's why I've, I always lean towards just let people do with, because the reality is, is nobody's gonna build twelve, twelve sheds, you know what I mean? Yeah, they could, but I mean, it wouldn't make sense to do that financially and, you know, just nobody's gonna do it.
I believe we have had that happen.
Have you had that happen?
Yes.
Well, see, now, see, maybe Dan's right then, so.
Well, there should be exclusion, I think, for anybody with
Over an acre.
Over an acre or something, yeah, or two acres, whatever. They can use the land that way. Where I, I under, totally get it on a city lot.
All right. Well, how about we
All city lots are in city limits, whether it's two acre lot or one acre lot, still a city lot in the city limits.
Oh, just
But if you got a two acre lot, you can build a bigger shed.
Right.
So you don't need three sheds, just build one shed that's big enough.
But what if you're in a situation where you already have one, then it's not big enough? And you need to, I mean, you're gonna tear down the whole thing, just add on?
I mean, there's
So if it's still attached?
Ways around.
Sure.
The
Yes, you can do that.
Okay. Yeah, that's a fair point there. And I guess, you know, if they can prove that they need more space or that they have, then they could come for the variance still too. So and we're not counting those smaller structures. I mean, I think that's, yeah, I mean, so, yeah, I mean, if you guys are good with, with, under a hundred and seventy square feet doesn't count, and two to three, or two for, you know, two or, two acres or less is two, and three, three, two acres or more is three.
I'd rather see anything over an acre be three. Because an acre is pretty substantial lot size.
Lot size.
And then the others would be two, that would make sense, like a quarter acre, a third acre in town, you're not gonna, the neighbors aren't gonna want a bunch of, you know.
Sure.
I mean, that would be what I would like to see.
I can, I can get behind that.
I'll make a motion to any lot size over an acre be allowed to have three, and then the hundred and seventy square foot or less doesn't count. That's my motion.
Are you gonna put a limit on how many ten by seventeen sheds you can have?
It'd be the, would that be the forty percent then, that would come in this play? I mean, I, I see what you're saying though, for sure.
We don't, you're not looking for a motion though. You're just looking for direction now if we're not
I would like direction, please, so that we can bring it back and repost.
Yeah. Okay. Well, yeah, I mean, let's try to, let's, let's try to hammer it out here quick, so we don't have to bring it back again. We're gonna wrap this up. So I mean, what do you think, Dan? If it's over an acre, you want to go to three?
I'm fine with that, long as you put a limit on how many hundred and seventy square foot ones.
Give me, give me a number.
One.
One? Yeah, but then you are allowing more. So so one that doesn't count. So you're still, could have, yeah.
I think that's fair.
What do you guys think?
I mean, everybody else is grandfathered in. I might have whatever.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I don't think that's enough still. I mean, if you have a pool and chickens, there's two that are oh, under a hundred and seventy, and you're gonna be, one of them's gonna be counted against your, against your score. Plus, if you have an accessory dwelling unit, there's another one. I mean,
How about we go to two? How about we say, if it's on a hundred and seventy and under is limited to, and then we'll go to, if it's an acre or less, it's two additional structures outside the hundred and seventy. And then if it's an acre or more, we'll go to three.
I'm good with that.
Good compromise.
Okay.
And then I also had a question. Someone asked about the accessory dwelling structure. Now, could that be like a camper or a
No, it has to be a permanent structure.
Okay.
There's very strict guidelines under the state building code for that.
Okay.
Okay.
Good to know.
Good on the direction there?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, you bet. And then let's go ahead and call this council meeting to recess, and we will start the E D A meeting. So I'll need a motion to recess the meeting.
I'll make a motion to recess.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Merrill and a second from Councilman Heeman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero.